Yes, yes, it is. Good afternoon, everyone. Seeing that time 4:30 has come and passed, and I see at least a physical quorum in chambers, I will call the February 13th meeting of the Common Council Executive Committee to order and ask staff to call the roll.
President Curry?
Here.
Vice President Figueroa Cole?
Here.
Alda Rediver?
Here.
Alda Madison?
Here.
Alda Govindarajan?
Here.
Alda Conklin?
President.
Alda Evers? Alda Bennett?
Here.
Thank you, Karen. All right, first thing before us will be to approve the minutes from our last meeting of January 23rd. I would entertain a motion to do so. Moved by Vice President Figueroa Cole, who have a second? Second by Alda Govindarajan. And unless I see her here, otherwise, I will assume unanimous consent. All right, thank you, that passes unanimously. We do not have any public comment this evening. Are there any disclosures and recusals from members of the body? Seeing and hearing none. Well, move us into items for consideration. Considering agenda items number three and four could take quite some time. Karen has graciously agreed to just refer everyone to the email that she sent today at 3:55 PM. It has her typed Chief of Staff and Council Office update, as well as some important reminders, as well as a copy of the spreadsheet, I believe, for the conversation we'll have on BCC structure. Is that all right with everyone to proceed instead of taking that up? Thank you. Then that will move us into agenda item number three, Legislative File 72568, Boards, Commissions, and Committee, BCC structure. And we have Deputy Ma-- oh, my gosh, Deputy Mayor Baumel returning with us, and I will turn it to her for review of where we are from the last time we had the discussion.
Graffon, okay? Okay, great. And I believe Karen has some slides she's going to put up. But thanks, everybody, for having me here. I have been working with Karen and with Isaac in the council office, as well as the three of us have been working with numerous org agencies to work through a process of reviewing our boards, committees, and commissions, and trying to optimize and ideally reduce somewhat, if you can go to the next slide. And the very brief answer question of what is this and why are we doing this? We are reviewing and updating the city's boards, committees, and commissions for the structure for efficiency, productivity, and to best align our resources with our priorities. Next slide. So just a quick breakdown. Some of this is review. We've talked about some of this before, so I can go somewhat quickly. But just to review, you know, we have a varying number of BCCs depending on when you count. And that is because sometimes we have a task force that's been started or ended, or an ad hoc committee that's been started or ended, or a president's working group. So these vary, these numbers do vary a little bit over time. We did account in 2021 as part of our work, and at that time, we had 84. They're not all exactly the same. Some of them are required by Wisconsin statute. So I put a few examples on the slide. Park, the Parks Board of Park Commissioners, our Personnel Board, Finance Committee, et cetera, some of these are required. Some are temporary ad hocs, I just mentioned. A number of others, by our count in '21, were 48, that we voluntarily created as a city. And I listed a few examples here, the Sustainable Madison Committee, the Urban Design Commission, the Food Policy Council, Landlord Tenant Issues, Housing Strategy Committee, and many others. And then probably noteworthy to Alders especially, is that there's another 16 committees that we don't control as a city, but that we have the ability to appoint members to. So like the Madison Metropolitan Sewerage District, the Overture Center Board, the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission. Our appointments sometimes include Alders, so even if we don't legislatively through this process have a chance to affect or change any of those, that's not really where we're focusing, still, it might be on some of your calendars, or it's among the people that we think about who our appointments are. And so I just want to recognize that as well. The most room we have for changing this work is in those 48 that are Madison-established committees. So moving on, a little bit of quick history, and you can hit forward again there. So the Task Force on Government Structure looked at a number of things, including our BCCs, but also beyond our BCCs. They looked at this for, from 2017 to 2019, and they found that a lot of our BCCs lacked geographic and racial diversity. Many resulted in a drain on resident staff and Alder time. They lacked consistent accountability. There were varying levels of authority and influence. Some lacked a well-defined purpose. Some had outlived their purpose or had overlapping purposes. And they had logistical processes, whether they be meeting times, or Robert's Rules, or what have you, or locations, that really didn't facilitate resident engagement. And they were often inadequately staffed to really complete the work. So they found a lot of room for improvement, and included a number of recommendations on the next slide, please, sorry, that really boiled down to top three organizations from their point of view were, excuse me, to organize BCCs around lead committees and create an org chart, eliminate or combine committees that are redundant or had outlived their purpose, and reorganize BCCs in a way that makes sure they're accountable to their intended purposes and functions. So, next slide. Another piece of their work, just to show, was a comparison of how the sheer number that we have relates to others. And why I'm focusing on a number here is because, you know, a lot of the feedback about, you know, challenges to residents engaging, or challenges to staff supporting them adequately had to do with the sheer number. And that was part of the conclusion there. So this, you'll remember, I said the numbers change. At the time this chart was made, we had 102, not 84, 102. So this is kind of a changing landscape. But there were a number of comparisons made to other cities, other Big Ten cities, other capital and university cities, other large Wisconsin cities that have the same regulatory landscape. And you can see that 102 is quite a bit higher than what we really see, certainly on average, but even in the range of what we were seeing elsewhere. So it was just kind of more fodder that it was worth taking a look at. So that was, next slide, please. That was the 2017 to 2019 process, was the Task Force on Government Structure. The next council took this up in a working group and worked for a couple of years on a number of, a number of different TFOGS recommendations, but also a number of approaches to BCCs. And that committee work then folded into this CCEC work to try to kind of take all of the work that's been done and kind of move it towards the finish line, and get towards a proposal for how to make change. Not to say change hasn't happened along the way. On the right, I listed a few things that have been combined in kind of singular one-off actions, but we still think it's been worth looking at a more holistic look. So next, two slides. Our work program this year, I've, we've been rewriting the goals a little as we go, not to change them, but realizing that they were long and wordy and hard to understand, and same topics, hopefully more clear. So we're characterizing the goals, which we've discussed with you before, as the size and functions of our BCC system should enable adequate staffing per committee, so that all committees can be high-functioning, should enable a clear and efficient path for residents to engage in the legislative process. This, you know, if something's being referred to six committees and you have an opinion on it, how do you know where you should go, when you should go, what's most important, et cetera? What's the most appropriate way to get your voice heard? And then it should enable efficiency in city processes and decision-making. And it should reinforce our value that BCCs are not a substitute for equitable or general community engagement. And I think in reflecting that, it's kind of inherent in how much time we spend in one, and is there an opportunity cost for time not able to be spent in the other, for either our Alders or our staff who support them. Oh, and I guess I missed it, but I wanted to also mention on that first bullet, the high-functioning, this is not just for Alders or staff or city services, this is also for all of the members on them. People want their time to be used, want it to be valuable, they want the value add. And part of enabling them to bring that to the table is giving them the type of support and resources they need as volunteers. So our guiding principles in the, in this process, this year with CCEC, has been, A, don't start from scratch. There's a lot of analysis that's been done, surveys that have been done, data that's been gathered. Gather that, build upon it, fill our gaps, answer the questions we need to answer strategically, and don't recreate the wheel. Second, focus on our needs and priorities and define a city structure from there. There have been points in time in the last several years where, just to explain what I mean by this more, where it's been more of a, let's look at the existing committees and how many had quorum issues, how many aren't getting legislation referred to them, and kind of as like an assumption that that might be a, that might guide the decision of keep this, cut that. And we're trying to step away from that a little bit and say, okay, well, not every committee's function is reviewing legislation, for one example, and, but really say, what do we need? Do we need a body that tackles these subjects? Let's think about creating that body, and if that's overlapping with some of our existing work, let's think about how to bring those all together. So it's not, if you had two committees, it's not, the members of this committee no longer have a committee, and the members of this committee still do. It's like, you know, maybe we need one committee with a handful of members from each of those committees, and combining both of them. So we're trying to kind of keep that as our approach. And then finally, aim for the total number of BCCs that allow us to achieve our goals. So what does that mean? That's a great question. We don't have, this is numeric as we want, but the question is kind of more of a thought process. If we have 80 committees, and we come back to you with a proposal that narrows it to 75, have we achieved our goal? Have we, can we provide them all the high, this type of staff support that makes them high-functioning? Can, have we freed up that time for community engagement? Or is that not quite enough? There's no magic number here. I mean, function matters more than a number, right? But it's something that we're trying to encourage people to think about and focus on for their own agencies, so that they can think about what it would take for them to have adequate staff support to create that goal in what they bring forward. Next slide. So activities to date, as I mentioned, we've been pulling together a lot of data, we've been looking at a number of what we've learned from previous surveys and data comparisons. We have looked at that performance data and updated that data. We have Alder assessments of current BCCs. I think you probably all recall getting a survey for your own input about how this is working. We've categorized by elements of a great city. So this is part of our work of trying to think of our priorities and think of it that way. We, these seven elements of a great city, they are the topics that guide our city-wide performance excellence work, they are the topics that guide the chapters of our comprehensive plan, they are topics that you have to link your work to in our budget process, they are, they are kind of guiding principles that we have coalesced around. So we have effective government, economy and opportunity, green and resilient, culture and character, land use and transportation, health and safety, and neighborhoods and housing. And so we did some mapping to take each of our existing BCCs and assign them kind of their most prominent element of a great city, because we think this might create some opportunities to realize, if you have an agency-by-agency look, you might miss something that's not in your agency, but actually overlaps quite a lot. And there's not a ton of them that we're finding, but there are some. And so it gives a chance to kind of talk a little more interdepartmentally as well. And then we've had multiple agency discussions, multiple rounds, some refining of the questions we ask based on, you know, you have kind of your test subjects of, we're going to talk to you and get some input from you, and then learn what we must not have asked, what we didn't ask but should have, and go back out and refine this. So like, for example, one of the early brainstorms we had with one department came back with, with, their thought process had very much included, we could do great things with all of these if we had the ability to support them all really well. And we realized, oh, let me be clear, like, with existing resources, can you support them all really well now? Or, you know, you need to realize, like, what does it take and what's the resource trade-off? So we're kind of going through that and iterating, and then trying to do these comparisons with agencies of, like, what do they need and what do they have, and how do those work together? So I'll, a little bit more about these, in, just as a couple of examples, in the seven elements of a great city, oh, sorry, next slide. I'm fast forwarding on my own PowerPoint, and then I have to look up and remember, so sorry. We don't have an equal number per element of a great city. I don't know that that matters. It may become one of these data points that we find, oh, we're seeing consistent trends with a number of ways of looking at this, and it makes the answer really clear, and they all back up and reinforce each other. Or it might really be the exercise it was designed to be, which is look for relationships cross-departmentally. But that's just one example of what we've started to see there, and we do see the most ineffective government and economy and opportunity. On the next slide, we have a spreadsheet, and I believe you got the spreadsheet by email, and we've turned this into kind of a workbook that departments are working on, which is mapping, like, what do you, this is back to that whole, we're not going to pick and choose one B.C. versus another, we're going to start with what do you need? And so by agency, what is it that you really think you need? And/or by topic? And then what's the best way to meet that need? How does that compare to what you have? How would you change things to take what you have and turn it into what you need? Is there abilities to combine that? Are there procedural changes to make agendas manageable if you combine things? So like, the example being, you know, these are all over the board. Maybe what you need is exactly what you have. You get regular legislative referrals, you need a body of people who have some expertise to review those and make some recommendations. That's what you need, that's what you have. Maybe you really need the input and expertise of a group once in a while, but not monthly. And maybe it doesn't mean the group is unnecessary, but maybe they're meeting at the wrong frequency. Maybe you're always kind of brainstorming of what to put on the agenda, but it's a topic a lot of people care about, and that might be an indicator that what you need is an engagement platform, and what you have is a committee. And so there's all kinds of ways that this could change. Maybe you have a membership that's full of general residents, and you need a membership of experts in a subject matter, you know? So there's all kinds of ways that this could change, but it's just thinking about what would be most productive towards the goal, and kind of using that as a layer of how do we get from A to B? Next slide. So this is all to date, like, most of what I've told you so far is really just probably a layer deeper in our planning process and thought process than we've gone here before. And part of, part of my intent is because when we start bringing proposed changes, I would just, I want, I'm trying to like, make sure we haven't surprised you and not told you kind of, you know, the ways we're thinking about this. So if there's ways we're thinking about this, or some emerging themes that kind of strike a chord with you for or against, it's good to hear that now. So we are starting to, what I'm not bringing today is examples. And this is hard for me, because I'm a person who thinks in examples. I want to say, we're hearing this, for example, this committee or that committee. And I'm holding, and I think that's really a great way to make things tangible, and I'm sorry not to give you that today, because I know a lot of agencies are putting things on the table and iterating. And I don't want to presuppose that they've talked to all the people they want to talk to. I don't want the publishing of this meeting to be the way something comes to light that's only half-baked. So I'm going to not give those examples, and I'm sorry for that. But I will say, there are some emerging themes that we're starting to see, and some is interested in stronger guidance on what defines a BCC as, as a board, commissioner, committee. For example, we have groups that are Legisdar-created committees that are just staff. They're just city staff. They're not advisory to the council, there's no Alders on them, there's no residents on them. But they're subject to the same rules. So if your agenda's not published this many days in advance, you can't meet. You have to, you know, not make sure you don't have negative quorum issues, which means outside of that committee meetings, even though you're all just staff, you can't talk to each other about those topics. You have, you know, the published minutes and all of that, and it's like, the, just the extra level of effort that goes into meeting in this format versus a different format. And it's kind of begged the question of, was that the right threshold, or was that the default of what we do when we make committees without really thinking through what was needed and whether that was what was needed? We, you know, there are awards committees likewise, that definitely there should be a committee. But it's not, you know, it, does it also need that threshold that if its agenda isn't published a week in advance, it should be canceled? I don't know. We can have different opinions, but these are some of the questions that are starting to come up. Likewise, you know, I'll just, in the same bucket, I think this relates to the creation of ad hoc committees, task forces, presidents' working groups. You've seen these counts over a few years in my slides, like, at this moment in time, we had 84. At this moment in time, we had 102. So there has been a question of, should there be kind of stronger guidance and thresholds of the steps to go through before determining you need a new committee on the table for And then the other is this recognition that sometimes combining things would drive a careful consideration of what's on agendas. Transportation did this recently, Transportation Policy and Planning Board and the Transportation Commission both had six-hour meetings pretty regularly, if you're going to combine them, how's that going to work? And they were, you know, they were pretty deliberate on, these are the things we can do at the staff level without bringing them to committee now. And everybody kind of had a process of getting comfortable with that. And I think there could be some places where that same theme comes up. And they'll, I'm not giving you examples, so I'm kind of warming you up to start thinking about it, is, like, what if something stops at this committee and doesn't get affirmed at council? What if something, you know, stops at, you know, stops at an administrative decision with a report to a committee and council where they have the ability to request, you know, an action if they want more information on it? There's a lot of things, contracts, staff reclasses, things like that, that rarely get pulled from consent agendas, but there's somebody ushering them through and going to all of the evening meetings and kind of, you know, making sure that that happens. So there's things like that that could, there, is there room for efficiency there, or a process improvement there that would help streamline things, I guess, is an open question? But I want to, these are the things I'm putting in your minds now, so you can think about them a little, and think about how they land with you, and how you think they might land with colleagues. Next slide, I just wanted to go over process a little bit. So we've talked about this, and the last time we were here with a schedule to you, we said there's, we were envisioning kind of two steps. One, get to the point where we come with a new high-level structure, a new, here is a list of proposed committees and a couple of sentences about what their purpose and function would be. Get to a level of comfort with that. And when we have a level of comfort with that, put it forward as a resolution. And the resolution would say, we would like to adopt this as our new structure, and we direct staff to then go do all the things that make it so. do all the things that make it so, meaning amend all of the M G O language, make any changes to membership composition that are needed, and think about an effective date. And we'd proposed an actual effective date of April 2025, which would be when all alder new assignments need to be made anyway, so just kind of do it all at once. So this schedule, the blue on top is the working with C C E C, and the green on the bottom would be after C C E C is in a point of comfort, getting that resolution, getting the legislative process into place. I'll acknowledge this, we've been a little slower to bring this to you than our first schedule said. So this is not something that we think will be completed by April. Maybe that was obvious by now, but it would probably be happening under the next C C E C. But essentially with that, our next steps from where we are are to continue getting this feedback, try to very quickly pull, pull the feedback from agencies together, conclude as to whether we feel like we need some more iteration or whether we've kind of gotten there. And put it all together with a couple of questions that you've heard from me already. Do these point us to a consistent conclusion? Do they help us meet our goals? And kind of have that conversation with you all. And then ultimately move forward through that timeline. My, this, the final slide is just questions and discussions. I'm sure you've got them for us. I've got them for you too. And I'll read the two questions that I would, I would love your thoughts on, but we can handle them however you'd like. If you'd rather ask questions of me first, that's, that's fine. So the questions that I am thinking about, in addition to reactions to all of the other things we just talked about are, how much or how to engage other alders in the process? Is simply sending them the PowerPoint and sharing some updates sufficient? Is there other way? We should be outreach to other alders? Does this feel like something that will be difficult and challenging that we should be engaging a lot? Or, you know, your thoughts on that? And then the other is, I think, you know, this is a little bit of a down-the-road decision in some ways because membership could come after, after kind of structure, but it'd be great to have a sense of your vision of alders on committees. Often we have two, sometimes we have three. But there's ways to think about, you know, that in terms of what it means for the committee or that in terms of what it means for alder time. Like, so the other way to flip the question is number of committees per alder versus number of alders per committee in terms of what's the most valuable use of alder time and what facilitates that the best. This gets kind of towards that engagement, the opportunity cost for other forms of engagement question. So those are things that we were pondering ourselves as well and then, and happy to talk about all of it.
Thank you, Kristi, or Deputy Mayor Baumel. I don't see anyone with their hand in the queue. Vice President Figueroa Cole.
You, Chair. So thank you, Kristi, for all that work on putting to this. I mean, I feel like, maybe for the first time, there's a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. Because we've been talking, I mean, I know people prior my time have been talking about this, for staff must be like, quite a nightmare. But, but I'm so glad to hear the engagement from staff to get their input and to sound almost like they believe us that we are actually meaning that we're going to do this. Because that's kind of the message that I'm getting with a few members too, from, from the staff that, oh yeah, sure, we're going to do that. Like, they don't, they have heard this so many times, but it feels like this time, the engagement is real. So I appreciate that. On regards to your questions, I honestly don't know, like, how perhaps the other alder engagement, we may have to treat this like a project, like any other city project, where they meet, you know, sometimes we get a request from staff about store water, for example, and they invite two or three of us on the area and they had those sessions. So I don't put, I don't want to put too much work on, on staff on this regard, but I think for this level of understanding, we may have to do a little bit more outreach, more direct outreach on that line. Because I know that we had done outreach via emails, I know that we have talked about some others, but at these, with this much information, I think might be best if we just, you know, smaller groups and get that going. And I forgot, there was two questions on the first question. But for the other two questions, I think the answer will most likely reveal itself as part of the process, like how many people we need per committee versus how many committees should an alder have? So I am not too worried about that question. I think, I think at the end, we will have a clean slack and then that will demand, that will determine the demand of it. So, but anyhow, for the most part, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alder. I have a comment. I don't see anyone else. So because we are getting ready to turn over council leadership and then next year, we a turnover of the council, and we're trying to better processes for onboarding orientation, I wonder if there's a piece where, I know the mayor has made herself available for one-on-one check-ins with folks, and I wonder if, you know, kind of leading into processes we know are going to be of being appointed to a committee, the mayor's task in that, if that could be integrated in some of those one-on-ones. So I would be interested in what her perspective would be, based on the fact that she appoints all of us to those committees and then uses the ranking chart or document that we use in order to help her make those decisions. And also, like, pre-existing opportunities to engage, I think is best. I think a lot of conversations we've been having over the years, but most recently is the lack of capacity that a lot of us have in the part-time role. And so I'm always a fan of wrapping in conversations into already existing. I know, at least this year, there's been several requests or discussions about having committees as a whole to have more in-depth conversations. So that's what came to mind for me. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Chair. I want to say thank you to Deputy Mayor Baumel as well. I know that this is not an easy task, but I think it's very necessary that we combine these committees or try to lesser them. I think like, when I initially thought of, or when you asked your question, I think I would like to see like, three committees per alder. And ideally, two alders, maybe three on some bigger committee. But I guess it's going to depend on how many, you know, how we structure and how we put them together. Because maybe there is more alders on some if we combine several of them together. I don't know. But like I said, ultimately, I would love to see if we could get down to even like, 60 B C Cs. So there's 20 people, three committees, that would be kind of about right. So that's just kind of what I thought about. But I love the work that's being done and I cannot wait to continue to make the B C Cs smaller. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Bennett?
Yeah, I just want to echo everyone's appreciation for your support, Deputy Mayor. It's been, yeah, I'm very glad to see that we're finally moving forward on this. I suppose I wanted to echo something that, I'm not sure if we heard during the presentation, but just as a reminder, I feel like, when I spoke with the mayor about this issue, she mentioned that it would be good to look at any B C Cs, to look at the B C Cs that alders have requested, and particularly look at those that we haven't requested, and see especially which ones are harder to fill. Like, if there is, I, and I will throw out a specific example, like, if there is not a second alder that is requesting to sit on, like, the vending oversight committee, then like, maybe that's something that we should be considered. And it would be great if we could pull that from the past, well, this past cycle of like, appointing alders to committees, and then also, and then the maybe past cycles of appointing alders, and maybe even appointing like, residents. Like, if we're not able to find residents that are interested and willing to sit on certain committees, then that should also be, I guess, in question. So, yeah, overall, I appreciate your work on this and that it's going to continue through the next C C E C to now. I would just say, like, I think the timeline showed that it would be, that we're hoping to have it be done by next year in 2025, which, to me, I think would be excellent to have it completed before the upcoming election cycle and new round of appointments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Vitterber? I just wanted to express my appreciation that we're moving to a place of aligning the B C Cs to the seven elements of a great city. I think that's absolutely critical that we do that work because otherwise, we're not creating these with a purpose. I also just wanted to point out the irony that effective government has one of the highest levels of committees, and that that might be a place to start reduction. And then just also to comment that, like, we've had a 20% reduction in B C Cs since this was last analyzed and so that it, we should celebrate small victories. That is still something for us to, to say, yeah, we have started doing some good work. It's not done yet, but we're in process. So just again, to echo the thanks and to keep the ball rolling.
Thank you, Alder. I had another comment too, and I don't see anyone else or question more so. So I hope not, I'm not trying to be offensive in saying this, but I know sometimes we hear the saying, too many cooks in a kitchen, and that can like, clog the process. But from my own experience of being appointed to committees that are like, is it called type one?
Type one committee?
Like, plan commission.
Yeah, yeah.
And knowing that some committees have built in, or the chair has integrated, like, a little orientation or offers. But when we're talking about how many numbers of alders on a committee, I'm wondering if we're flagging some of the more labor-intensive B C Cs and whether or not they offer those options. My mind automatically is going towards like, standard operating procedures, but I could also understand how heavy of a lift that would be. But I know for me, being a first-time alder on plan commission, that was a large learning curve that I still didn't feel I had a good grasp of up until the end of my appointment. And so kind of looking at some of those more labor-intensive B C Cs, tracking that, but also maybe being in favor of continuing alder and a new alder when we are talking about appointments. I know that oftentimes when I've been assigned to a committee, staff are really, really helpful, but it also helps to get the perspective of alders who have served or are still serving, and kind of look to that too, as like, an onboarding and training and another resource to tap into. So I guess the question that I had was, I know staff are heavily involved because staff, staff the meetings, but also the chairs that chair those meetings. If there are certain B C Cs maybe where that feedback could also be warranted from the chairs.
I think, I think that that's a great idea. And it, it ties in, you know, I keep saying this phrase, like, high-functioning committee, and I haven't spent a lot of time defining it. We have, you know, we have levels of city support that we give to levels of training for staffing, levels of training for all members of B C Cs, levels of training for the chairs. And the truth is, is when you have 80 committees, that I think collectively, it was something close to 1,000 members. And a lot of those turn over every two years. It's a, it's a, it's a lot to train. Chairs change every year, and even your staff can change. And of course, when you have a lot of B C Cs, there are some, like, plan commission as an example, it's chaired by the director of planning, or I'm sorry, staffed. It's staffed by the director of planning. There are, we run the gamut of who might be staffing something. It certainly can often be somebody who that was not part of the job description when they applied, right? And it's just, it's one of the other things that we ask them to also do. And some agencies have a couple of people that they assign to multiple, and some have it just kind of spread out into whoever's the subject matter lead on that topic, right? So training staff that changes over, training chairs that change over, training members that change over. We recognize that with fewer committees, we could more robustly stay on top of and dig a little, and invest a little more deeply than we are now. And fewer committees will make that easier to do. So that's, we agree, there are, like, the orientation from the chair and that partnership that you see in some of those more robust committees is something we would like to see more of. We think a lot of these committees have, they have, they have the members and the brainpower to be doing, you know, strong work and with the staff, staff support and the resources and the information brought to them. You know, they, they, there's the ability to produce more and at a deeper level than we currently have the support to kind of facilitate.
Because I know the image isn't up in front of us, just want to go through one more iteration and see if there are comments, questions. So the questions posed are how to further engage all alders in advance of having the draft? Is there a vision for the number of alders on each committee or number of committees per alder? Any other thoughts, comments, suggestions? Vice President Figueroa Cole?
I don't have any suggestions on those questions. Just a quick question about, I mean, and I probably totally wrong about this, but I thought there was some discussion or process about maybe updating Legistar or some other tool that facilitates the appointments to make the calendars and whatever. I think, Leah, is that her name?
Lila, Lila. Yeah, Karen probably knows that better than I do.
Is that a thing or am I just?
Yeah, I think I T is working on that with, with Lila. I don't think it will automate the process.
I mean, like.
More effective. The system that Lila's using now is quite old. And so, yeah, those are the folks, they're working on it.
Okay, thanks.
Alder Vitterber? I concur with Alder Conklin that I think three committees per alder and two alders per committee is logical. And I think in terms of how is this information provided, I think we've seen a great model of that with our finance director and how he's been distributing, distributing information to us about the next budget, both in writing, in slides, and in video. We have the video of today's presentation. So I think, you know, again, people have different learning styles and I think we have all the tools at our disposal to be able to share that information with our peers.
Thank you, Alder. I am not seeing any other hands in the queue online or in chambers. If that is the case, I will move us on and again, express thank you to Deputy Mayor Baumel and everyone who has been working on this for a long time.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us into our fourth agenda item, Legislative File 81927, Debrief Interim Alder Appointment Process. So shocking to believe, two weeks ago, we went through this process and I wanted to make sure that we had some time before memory got away from us to kind of share feedback about the process of appointing Alder Uguir to District 19, knowing that council leadership set, currently in ordinance, council leadership determines what the process will be. But also- Um, but also recognizing that very actively in C C E C, other thoughts, ideas, suggestions had come up. And so, um, hopefully it's a long time before we have to go through the process again, but I wanted to open the floor to kind of hear feedback from members about how they thought this last process went. If you have experience with previous um, appointments or interim appointments or were an interim appointee yourself, um. Not, I guess I should put the disclaimer. So Attorney Haas clearly is not with us, but we do have uh, Assistant Attorney Patty Lawton, um, joining us virtually. So thank you for that, but not necessarily to create policy or ordinance change on the floor, but to gather that feedback, um, to kind of compile that if there are ordinance changes, we want to put forward for a future interim appointment. Um, that's known at least, so. Alder Madison.
Yay, an opportunity to share my process though. But I, I liked, I actually liked both. I liked the process that I went through and the process that we used to appoint for District nineteen, I think it is. Um, I think the only one for me, because there were, there was a good number of questions. There was, I don't know, maybe six to eight. I can't remember how many. But I just treated it like you would, you know, have to go and research and write a paper that kind of treated it that way. But that's not to say that everybody who would be a great alder would be good at that process. So I do think the way that it was structured most recently um, equally works only because it's, it's, it felt like it was, it would be less stressful for the person going through the process. Um, I would imagine they still worked really hard to, you know, prepare their answers to their questions, but it was less questions that you had to kind of research for. Um, the other thing, and I don't know if, if this is something that we can do, but I do remember, um, when I saw the application went out there, there was, I'm a process person. So like if I don't have a format and I need to create the format, then I get all stuck in like, you know, what the format should be and just try to create a format. But I think maybe having a consistent format for the documents that are submitted, because I felt like in this process, there were things submitted that others didn't submit, for example. So then you have less information to go by. So it's just like, you know, everybody's submitting their stuff in a way that they want, you know? So I think a more, and this, you know, this may or may not be a good one, but just a more uniform, what's being submitted would be, just as a process person, that would be helpful. Um. The other, the other thing too, um, and I don't know if this is, this is the process, but I, I don't, I just felt like it was, it was not necessary to have a discussion in front of the interim. And I get why we have to and it's open. But I just felt like that should have been on us to figure out before we got in a room with them. Um, somehow, I don't know. I just, there was just something about the discussion that was happening and folks in the room that felt, I don't know, dismissive of these folks to a degree. I don't know. I, I can't really, I don't have the words to describe it right now. I just know I didn't like that. Like I didn't like us having a discussion about potentially having these folks here. You know, in front of a ton of other people where they would have to kind of compete for, you know, whatever that, that would look like for them. Um, but outside of all of that, I liked both processes. Cause again, um, it was, I think for me, it was virtual, for them, it was in person, but I think the biggest thing I would like to see is a uniform process for what's submitted. Okay.
Thank you, Alder. Before you unmute your mic, question back for you, um, just because I'm obviously I've identified that you were appointed in the interim capacity at first. Um. In terms of doing your interview virtually versus being in person, we still had the conversation, I believe, virtually in front of candidates and there was a bigger pool. So there was a process of elimination. Did, how did that feel uh, in a virtual setting? And do you think?
I think, I don't want to, this is, I'm saying this not to be like, it's more so, it's, for me, it's, it's, uh, it's unique in the respect that I have a ton of experience in those kind of spaces. Not everybody's going to come into the room and know people who might be on council, who have a, I have a ton of virtual meetings, you know, I work remotely, you know, like all of those things are just very common for me. Um, so I can't, for that one, I, I just know for someone who doesn't have that experience, being in the room for those discussions. And I'm not saying that they, they shouldn't happen. I just maybe on our end, we should test scenarios, like in the case this happens, we will just, you know, like set all our scenario rules in advance. So, so yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Alder Govendarajan.
Thank you. Um, I'm very glad we're having this, this discussion. I think definitely a ditto what Alder Sabrina Madison said, like I think having a much more uniform application and a process would make a at least the application process, uh, application itself would make a big difference. Um, because one of the things I found most helpful from the applications were this one person submitted, I think their resume of like literally all their jobs that they've had, at least in the recent couple of years. Um, and that just kind of gives a, a little insight of what do they do outside of wanting to do this political role? Um, what are their morals, values? Like, do they volunteer, things like that? I, and I think that's helpful to know when you are kind of doing a job interview um, for a public service position. But I, I think that is going to be helpful if we do that. One other thing, probably like an ordinance change that I think would be extremely helpful is just having the a requirement of if you want to go through this process, you have to get twenty-five um, nomination signatures from your neighborhood. Um, we do that as alders when we file our campaign papers. I think that can be a pretty simple idea for the candidates as well. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder.
Alder Bennett, I believe was first, and then Alder Conklin.
Uh, yes, sorry. And I know I wasn't there during the process, um, but I just wanted to clarify where particip-, were like interviewees in the room during discussion?
Yes. So that was a piece, um, just a little bit of background for folks. Seeing that all the previous interim appointments had happened virtually, um, there was a lot of intention and thought about being in person. For instance, being in chambers, we were like, where would someone be where they can see everyone, but also not feel on the hot seat? Our podiums are standing. Um, and so that's why we reserved the room at MMB and I personally, as having been through hiring processes, um, requested a holding room or a holding space for uh, candidates who were not interviewing to be in, but because of public record, an open record, we were told that we could not exclude anyone from that process if they wanted to be in the room.
Hmm. I mean, I don't know exactly what are like ordinances at open meetings. Um, is it an allowable case for discussions about that to be closed?
So our direction from Attorney Haas was no. And trust, we, we asked a couple scenarios and questions and it always came back to no.
Okay, that's okay. Yeah, no. I mean, I, I'm fine with that. It would, I thought to me, it's preferable that such discussions would be closed, but I'm also understands if it needs to be open.
Not to put Attorney Lawton on the spot, but um, that does bring up a good question, because I know that we do go into closed session and other um, meetings that we are representing ourselves as alders in and, um, I guess if there, if you have any thoughts or response back to Alder Bennett's question um, that you'd like to elaborate on, please feel free.
Sure. Um, under the public records law, there's very limited scenarios in which you can go into a closed session. One of the things um, you can go into a closed session is typically when you're talking about um, employee matters, employment type of matters. But there is no corresponding exception for uh, things like this where it would be talking about um, interviewing potential council members. The exception is more for employment type matters.
Thank you. Uh, Alder Conklin.
Yes, um, thank you, Chair. I wanted to say that Alder Govendarajan had a good suggestion about getting the signatures, but I think maybe it should be twenty. Just because I think we have to get forty to get on the ballot and they're doing this like for, you know, just helping out. I think if we just ask for a minimum of twenty, I think that would be a good taste, just for them to get out there and see or people could see who they are and know who they are and things like that. So, um, that would be my suggestion is just to cut it in half to twenty and make it easier.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govendarajan.
Thank you. A quick question for the attorney. This is another hypothetical, so I apologize. Um, but very similar to what we did a couple of weeks ago. Are we able to just have the public portion of things in another room, but connected to a computer that they can see everything happening? Where they can see everything taking place and hear it and everything, but we as alders necessarily wouldn't see the other individuals physically in the room, which could just make it easier for us to ask awkward questions?
Not entirely sure, um, what you were getting at there. Um, you know, the public meetings is typically you have a space and you have people that can come into that space and it's accessible. Um. I don't know, I, I guess if both of those rooms were online. But, but I think you're thinking of maybe like we have a Zoom and you would put somebody in another room, that type of thing. Is that what you're thinking of?
I was thinking like a physical room. So let's say like we are here in this common council room and people can't watch from the sides. They would have to like go to a different room and watch from a TV or something.
Okay, okay. All right. As long as it would still be a public meeting, but you would just be watching it in a different room.
Correct.
Okay. I, I mean, as long as it's accessible. Um, and it follows the open meeting law, I would think it would be okay. But it would have to follow the open meetings and it would have to be accessible to those that want to come.
That's good to hear. I think that if we can actually get that to happen, I think that might be a little bit better when it comes to asking those questions, because it really was awkward in that moment, trying to figure out, do I ask a question of the candidates? Do I not? Um, and I think it would have been helpful in the moment. Thank you.
Alrighty, thanks.
Thank you. Um, so again, a little bit more background information and maybe get some more comments. Um, so the biggest difference between last C C E C and this current one is that we um, are in person and the prior was all virtual. And um, the president at the time noticed a challenge of having C C E C right before common council, not just being time limited, but also sometimes discussions would be really good and productive and going and we'd have to break in order for um, enough time to allow to set up for common council. So I know that for instance, the amount of questions, um, we as coun- council leadership and with Karen kind of went back and forth about certain questions, what do we want to make sure to ask? Um, the not asking questions of the candidates during the interview process was also an intention of um, trying to equitably make sure that everyone had access to respond to questions that they were asked. Um, to not necessarily pick on a candidate that may have not answered a question that we wanted, or maybe we didn't see um, information in their application materials. Um, but there were a couple themes that I think came up that I hadn't thought of and considered for the process that really, um, I think all of us could agree, um, the, there's a missing piece of the resident engagement. Obviously, they are entrusting of us as who we, who were elected. Um, but I remember with District twelve, when um, Alder Boss left. Um, receiving emails from District twelve constituents about matters that were going on in their district, that they felt they didn't have a representative to advocate for them. Um, because we, that was, it was left open a little bit longer. And so I think Alder Govendarajan's suggestion of getting nominations of signatures sounds like a time efficient compromise of at least there will have to be some engagement with folks that would vote you in if you decide to um, seek the permanent appointment through election. Um, but also the fact that even though we do have public meetings, I don't believe, I think there was one member who was a resident of District nineteen, but also has served as a prior alder who was in the space. And so, um, I wonder if there are addition I hear two alders who are saying, yep, I like the idea of getting nomination signatures. Another thing to kind of consider and a lesson learned, I think for myself of being um, the first time going through an interim process was the alder who was resigning in that process and kind of being a little, putting in a little bit more boundaries um, about what we would need. Um, so for instance, the resignation happened around the holiday time. So we were intentional about leaving the application period open for a very long, almost a month, I think, to not miss folks, um, to give folks the opportunity to celebrate or recognize holidays, but also that deadline. And then also the alder that was leaving wanting as little time of gap between her resignation and the appointment of the successor. Um, and so lesson learned from that of kind of being more direct instead of, um, I did lean on or really wanted to respect all their slacks wishes that kind of in grand scheme, created a little bit of, um, un, unclarity, is that a word? Not clear. Um, and then also I think as uh, both Vice President Figaro Cole and I served on the prior C C E C, um, the amount of questions and thinking we had what, five appointments, interim appointments? Six, five or six, definitely five. And, um, even looking back to some of the questions that we asked to our peers who are now on the council permanently and did that really, did you really gain anything that would, from their answers that would help you determine whether or not they could meet the requirements, um, or the legislative requirements of the job and duty? Um, and then I think there's also a piece of uh, leaning into the city's mission and values and knowing that we talk about equity and inclusion. And um, making sure that there are some questions that kind of encapsulate both of those values, but I guess, not necessarily a lesson learned, but kind of the interview iterations for the prior C C E C. And hearing from some peers that felt offended about the being people of color, answering questions about how they've amplified or supported um, other efforts uh, for folks with different identities. And so, um, I don't want to belabor the conversation, but this is really helpful for me as well. And so I see Vice President Figaro Cole.
Well, I was thinking, listening to all the input, um, I guess I, I a little bit hung up on the part of processes, which is, you know, kind of like my lane here. And I do appreciate the idea of having a consistent, um, form or whatever for the applicants to submit, that is not just ask for a resume. So I'm wondering if having, if we were had gone the direction of having six questions or seven questions or whatever many questions we wanted to throw out there and have the people, um, wanting to apply, answer those questions ahead of time. We could publish the questions so everybody on the public knows what these, who these people are, who are about to represent them. And kind of like try to engage people at that level. And then at the actual interview, just randomly ask one or two questions from the list of where we need more clarification. Instead of um, making the process more, um, like instead of putting more hurdles. I do like the idea of the, of the signature things, but I think the ordinance itself speaks about, um, if I'm not mistaken, something about like who can replace the position and is, you know, someone from the county or someone with some experience. So it's like inclining, like this is a short term assignment. And he say, please do us this favor type of thing. favor type of thing. So not necessarily, like, I don't go about it from the perspective of this person is going to, has any intention of running again or not running, like, it doesn't matter to me at the point, so why even put them to go through, like, I feel like, you know, like even the people that, that, that served before, I don't see me demanding that they go and get 20 signatures to do me a favor at this moment. So, but I can also see a process where we can actually get to know these people better, not just the resume, and that made that information available to the public, and then we can dig deeper into specifics at the interview. I don't know. That's it out there.
Thank you. I wanted to ask a question back. Alder Bennett, I see you. In terms of making information public, so I just wanted to clarify, because the applications, everything that was submitted to us was kind of filtered through staff, some information was, personal information was redacted, but then sent out. So just in response to your making things more public, would it be the publishing of the questions and their answers? Okay, thank you.
This is, you know, this is Jael Carey, she lives in District 19, and she wants to represent you because here are the questions. And they make that, so all the people know who, who wants to represent them. And they can then be part of the process with a simple email saying, you know, hey, I know Jael, she'll be great for this, da-da-da-da, or whatever. And I feel like, it's, I mean, everything is the public record, so it's not like we're, we're giving surprise questions. I mean, I hear Alder Madison saying, I did all this research to answer my questions, so why can't you share that ahead of, ahead of time? It doesn't, there's no magic secret thing going on here, it's, it's, everything is given ahead, so why can't we just publish that ahead of the game?
Thank you for the clarification. Alder Bennett?
I wanted to echo that I personally do not find value in making an additional requirement for getting 20 signatures. It seems like, to me, an additional hurdle that is more, I don't know, like, something that you just, I, I, I don't know what the word is that I'm looking for right now, but it seems like an additional hurdle that is unnecessary, and I don't think adds to the process, though I believe that the goal of increasing the amount of opportunities for residents to engage in an interim, and then, yeah, in an interim or whatever, Alder slash increasing opportunities for us to engage with candidates before the process would be ideal. I know that for me, I don't, like, in the processes that I have gone through, I wish that there was an opportunity to do something like grab coffee with the candidate, or like just hear about them more in a more casual setting, other than just a single interview. I mean, you kind of think about it like any job process generally, like, you do do like a first and round of interviews, and then a final round of interviews, and those first and second round of interviews might not be on the same date, but I don't know, that's just my two cents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. No, I think you bring up a good point, and Alder Madison, I'll get to you after this, that did come up as questions in terms of what's the process or the rules for engaging candidates once we knew who they were. And I'll share my personal thoughts on that after we go to Alder Madison. Go ahead, Alder.
The only thing I wanted to add, it would be really, really dope if we could do these in folks' district. So like if there is a, you know, like how Madison College, for example, has tons of smart rooms, or libraries may have smart rooms, but a place that is in or nearby where their immediate, you know, folks who live in that district can attend.
Thank you, Alder. Yes, bringing up good points, I'm like, oh, man, I forgot that in the disclaimer. So just one thing that I want to bring acknowledgement to is the behind-the-scenes work that our IT staff does to make sure everything is up and running. And so the idea or thought that Alder Govendarajan asked Attorney Lawton about, like, well, what, like, a lot of scenarios were thought of, and with the timeline and needing to set it, and it be, publish everything on time, it was very clear that, for instance, like, I think it was a last-minute thing to secure MMB and make sure that had compatibility to actually livestream the, or, not livestream, record the interviews in the room. And so I, I do like the idea of it being in the district, but I know, for instance, when I've tried to do neighborhood meetings, assumptions that the library could enable or allow for different type of accessibility, like, it takes a lot. So not saying that it's impossible, but I know, there's a lot more that goes on that we don't know about, to make sure that we can publicly display what we're doing for these processes. But kind of back to the engaging candidates before the process. So I, I like that we have the opportunity to, at least, we're, we're a legislative body, so we have the ability to present changes that, to legislation that we think would be good, and see that democratic process out through having that come towards the council. But I guess I use my own experience of having hired at a job, and I don't know where the rule is written, but I know when I apply for a position, I may reach out to staff and ask questions, or maybe be inquisitive, like, the position description, ask specifics like about benefit packets and things. But I don't know how I would feel if a staff member was reaching out to me outside of an interview to ask me questions. And so when the question did come up, this iteration of, hey, we know who the applicants are, are, I appreciate that, and Alder asked first before doing, but it was kind of a gray response of, well, legally, there's nothing that says that you can't, but also, I think in our climate of, it's being, it's hard to be an elected official, and when you're going through the process to serve for interim process, trying to respect that they're kind of doing us a favor, and their constituents a favor as well, but also not being in a public space. If it's not email, if it's a phone conversation, what happens if something offensive was said and someone drops out of the process? And so not necessarily trying to gatekeep, but also think about the what-ifs that can occur in natural, like, occurring conversations. And so I'm curious if anyone has thoughts on engaging with candidates before the process. I know Alder Bennett just brought up maybe grabbing coffee. Personally, I don't know, it made me uncomfortable, but I don't know if that's just me. Alder Conklin?
Thank you, Chair. I really don't like that idea, just because I feel like it can, I don't know, I feel like it can give people unfair advantage. Like, one of the candidates wanted to reach out and talk to me before the interview, but I just told him to hold off until after we find out one way or another, you know what I'm saying? Because to me, I just thought it would be unfair advantage. I wanted to go in not knowing anybody except for what I read off the paper, so that's where I, my thoughts are on that.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Madison.
I think if it's provided in like a uniform way, where you say, hey, you, you, if you like to reach out to Alders, former or current, to gate, because, you know, they could not reach out to us, but there, there's nothing stopping them from reaching out to former Alders. And I would say I absolutely reached out to former Alders to understand what am I getting myself into? And so no one, you know, yeah, I just, as long as it's provided in a uniform way, and they get the same information and let them know, you know, it has no bearing on anything, but you're more, you know, not telling them like, yes, you should do this, but because there's a history of appoint, or potential appointees wanting to talk with former or current Alders, that, you know, that's their choice, so.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Govendarajan?
Hi. I, I mean, no surprise here, I feel like, but I was the Alder who asked to meet, and like, all that. I, I don't know, I think it would be helpful. I think if it was done in a uniform way, and for the sake of public records, also like, be very forefront and be like, hey, I'm just going to record this, you know, like, if they don't like that, maybe they don't have to meet. Or at least, like, whatever notes you take, you send it to the common council office, at the very least. I think having that level of transparency and mitigating any unfairness that you can think of would be, if those right steps were taken, then maybe that is something that we can consider more. I would have liked it personally, just because this was my first time going through that experience, and I was very confused. Learning more about everything else and the implications that it might have, like, I'm maybe still on the fence a little bit here, but I do think, if done right, it could be very beneficial. But also not made mandatory, because not every member of CCEC might be able to have like four meetings in a week, so, yeah.
Right, yes. Thank you, Alder, and appreciate that acknowledgement. Alder Bennett?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate the discussion going on here, and your thoughts, President Curry, really over my eyes, so a different perspective. I would just, I, I like the idea of having a standardized message and materials. I would suggest, like, maybe if we wanted to look at other job interview processes, it could be nice to have, maybe before the interview, like, a few days before the interview, just like a open office hour-esque type thing, maybe with CCEC, just like a chance for interested candidates to ask questions, and like, it's less, I mean, I guess it could be something that's more low-key, that like, you can come if you want, council leadership and CCEC will be there, or like whoever is available, like whichever Alders are available to be there. So then it's not necessarily like, we're interviewing you or whatever, but it's just a chance for everybody to have the opportunity to reach out and, or to ask questions and have them answered. And then I also suggest, I know this might sound quite silly, because our job does not come with a job description. I actually remember back when I was first running, literally looking up like what is an Alder, and being very surprised and frustrated, I could not find a description on our, our City of Madison website. But it might be helpful if when we send out, like, in the, like, the, the request that we have, this whole composition, maybe just a short description about, like, what an Alder is, and what the time commitment is, and what their expectations are, like, you will sit on, get, like, these committees, which would be the committees that the past Alder had. So, I don't know, that's just a suggestion of something that might be helpful to potential peop-, to future potential people that are looking to apply to these positions, just so we have like a standardized FAQ-type thing for them to have.
Thank you, Alder. Just a quick note, at least the way I found it was through ordinance, but I know Larissa has found an old position description that she's working on updating, so it's coming your way. All right. Thank you all for the robust conversations. I'm not seeing any other hands or folks in the queue to speak, so I'll move us along to our last agenda item, which is considering, consideration of future agenda items, sorry, that's Legislative File 78125. On the list that has not yet been completed, that I thought is relevant considering the resolution that's making its way, is an update on discussion of history of street names, some other things, our collaboration with MMSD, discussion of reducing size of council, and Department of Civil Rights to present on the registry analysis process. So this is a document that is in Ledger Star. If there are any pressing things that folks would like to see added or addressed in the next meeting or so, please feel free to say that now, or email myself and Karen. Otherwise, we have our common council and chief of staff update in your emails, and not seeing anyone else with hands raised, that takes us to the end of our agenda, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Alder Conklin, seconded by Alder Figaro Cole. I will sue me nan's consent, lest I hear a C, and people are moving, so that is unanimous. Thank you.